Meeting. If you would like to comment on any item on the agenda, please fill out a gold speaker card and hand it to the police officer in the back of the room. The mayor will call your name when it's your turn to speak, and you can make your way to the podium. All speakers have three minutes. If you'd like to talk about a topic that's not on the agenda, please complete a blue speaker card and give it to the officer in the back of the room. Items that are not on the agenda are heard at the end of the voting meeting. Glendale has seven city council members: Mayor Jerry Wires, Vice Mayor Joyce Clark of the Yucca District, Councilmember Jamie Eldama of the Ocatillo District, Councilmember Ian Hugh of the Cactus District, Councilmember Bart Turner of the Beryl District, Councilmember Ray Mounner of the Saguaro District, and Councilmember Lauren Tomachoff of the Choya District. This meeting is streaming live on Glendale's Facebook and YouTube pages and the city's cable television station, Glendale Channel 11. Thank you for joining us.
Well, good evening and welcome to Glendale City Council Meeting, February 14th, Valentine's Day, Arizona's Birthday, February 14, 2023. This meeting is called to order. Roll call, vote. We'll start off with Councilmember Eldama. Councilmember Hugh?
Here.
Councilmember Melner?
Here.
Councilmember Tomachoff?
Here.
Councilmember Turner?
Present.
Vice Mayor?
Here.
And I'm present. Our next two items on our agenda is the invocation and the pledge of allegiance. The invocation today will be delivered by a good friend of mine, David Toomey?
Here.
Of Bellevue Heights Church. Sir, if you'll come up. And then while he's doing that, gentlemen, if you are wearing a hat and it's appropriate, if you'd remove it, and if everyone would please stand for our invocation, and then if you would, please remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
Sure.
Please bow your heads in prayer with me. Gracious and loving Father, this evening we celebrate love. We celebrate Your love, the love by which this world was created and now is sustained, the love which overcomes broken relationships with forgiveness, the love that endures the turbulence of life with steadfast optimism because You, Holy One, underwrite us, the love that responds to anger with a listening and compassionate heart, the love that invests in values that are timeless and eternal, the love that expresses joy when someone else is the center of attention, the love that drives us to seek agreement in the midst of adverse points of view, the love that never gives up on the pathway to reconciliation and justice, the love that melts hearts that have been hardened through disappointment and pain, the love that forgives when it is not earned or deserved, the love that is blind to skin color and celebrates another's point of view, the love that protects, guides, and guards with compassion, the love that is patient and kind, that does not envy, does not boast, is not proud or rude, is not self-seeking nor easily angered, the love that keeps no record of wrongs, that does not delight in evil but rejoices in truth, the love that always protects, always trusts, always hopes, always perseveres. Oh gracious and loving Father, tonight we celebrate Your love and pray that it will inform hearts and minds as debate takes place and decisions are made that provide for the health and welfare of this great city and her people. We praise this in the name of the One who was love Himself. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, sir. If you want, just remain standing right there. Please join me in a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, sir.
Okay. Next on the agenda is consideration of the minutes of the January 24th, 2023 voting meeting. Councilmembers, any corrections or additions to those minutes? Hearing none, can I get a motion to approve January 24, 2023 voting meeting minutes?
Mayor?
Go ahead.
January 24, 2023 voting minutes. Motion to approve?
Second. Okay, I got a motion. Councilmember Eldama, second. Councilmember Hugh, approve the minutes. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Hearing none. Motion carries. Proclamations and awards. We're going to be doing Black History Month in the city of Glendale. With us here today is a good friend of mine. I'm going to come down there and we'll introduce her and we'll read a proclamation. Right there is perfect. All right, today we're going to be proclaiming February 2023 as Black History Month in the city of Glendale. With us here today, as we present the proclamation, is the president of the Glendale Black Business Owners Coalition, Marcy Garland. How are you doing?
Wonderful.
Ms. Garland is active in our community and recently organized Glendale's Juneteenth event here in our downtown. She's also hosting Black History Month events this weekend. Marcy, again, thank you so much for all that you do for our community. I'm going to read this proclamation, then I'm going to give this to you, and then I'll let you go to work. Whereas we celebrate Black History Month, we're celebrating the many generations of African Americans who have shaped and strengthened the fabric of our city, our state, and our nation. And whereas we reflect upon the significant contributions of the African American community over the years, it is also important to understand that the many accomplishments that were made amid undue hardships, inequality, and extreme forms of racism and violence. Whereas the city of Glendale recognizes the contributions of the African Americans to our community's rich heritage and success through the efforts of those who came before us, those that live here now, we celebrate our city's diversity and recognize that we must all work together to keep the American dream alive. Whereas Black History Month is an opportunity to honor and recognize the central role of African Americans in the history of our nation. Now therefore, I, Jerry P. Wires, Mayor of the City of Glendale, Arizona, on behalf of our city council, do hereby proclaim February 2023 as Black History Month. Be it further resolved, I encourage all residents to celebrate the rich heritage, immense strength, and substantial contributions of the African American community today and every day as we continue our efforts to support the principles of justice and equality for a more equitable society for all. Now, by our city clerk, Ms. Bauer, and myself, I want to present this to you. And would you like to say a few things?
Yes, I will.
Perfect. I'm going to lower that down because you're not quite as tall as I am.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, councilmembers.
Thank you, everybody that's here in the audience. It really is more than a privilege to accept this on behalf of the city, to the community, the African American community. I would just like to bring to everybody's attention that we will in fact be celebrating Black History Month in beautiful Rose Lane Park this coming Sunday between the hours of 1:00 p.m. to 5:00 p.m. Please come along. And we certainly do look forward to seeing everybody attend this event as we continue to acknowledge and celebrate Black History Month here in Glendale, Arizona. Thank you.
Excellent. Let's get a picture.
Yes.
Y'all want to get a picture?
Sure.
Yeah. Come on down. Come on down. Picture with Ms. Garland behind, I missed that. Okay, we'll now move to our consent agenda items three through 16. I do have a few updates on this. Community Services Department, they've requested that items four and five be moved to the February 20th meeting, so take those off your list. And item number eight has been moved to new business on this agenda to allow for some discussion. It's also my understanding that the Vice Mayor Clerk would like to have a separate vote on item 13. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, so with that said, items on the consent agenda, their routine nature, that they've been previously studied by this council at a workshop session. They are intended to be acted upon in one motion by this council. Do we have any speaker cards on any of the consent agenda items?
No, sir.
Perfect. Okay, so if that's the case, can I have a motion to approve consent agenda items three, six, seven, items nine through 12, and items 14 through 16?
Yes, Mayor, I move we approve consent agenda items three through seven, nine through 12, and 14-
No, that'd be incorrect. Items three, six, and seven.
Oh, that's right. Well, three, six, do I make the motion all over again, or just-
Yeah, yeah, just put it-
All right. All right, Mayor, I move we approve consent agenda items three, six, seven, nine through 12, and 14 through 16.
Perfect.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion from Councilmember Tomachoff, second from Councilmember Eldama to approve a consent agenda items three, six, seven, nine, 12 through 14, I'm sorry, nine through 12 and 14 through 16. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. I have it. Motion carries. Moving on to item number 13. Ms. Bauer, would you introduce item 13 for us, please?
Authorization to enter into a professional services agreement with Comp Psych for the Employment Assistance Program, Employee Assistance Program, and Traumatic Event Counseling Services for Public Safety Personnel.
Okay, is that yours?
Yes, it is, Mayor. I don't require any discussion, but this, as most of the items under bids and contracts, is a five-year contract, and as my habit in practice, I do not vote in the affirmative for five-year contracts, as it does not provide continuity of oversight by city council. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, so could I get a motion to approve items 13?
Yes, Mayor, I move we approve item 13, Authorization to Enter into Professional Services Agreement with Comp Psych.
Second. Motion, Councilmember Tomachoff, second from Councilmember Hugh, to approve the recommended item. Is there any discussion on this motion? Hearing none. We'll conduct a roll call vote. Councilmember Eldama, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Hugh, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Melner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomachoff, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Vice Mayor, how do you vote?
Nay.
Chair votes aye, that motion carries. Moving on to consent resolutions, I have a request from Community Services to move item 17 to the February 28th voting meeting as well. So, Ms. Bauer, if you would, please read consent resolution items 18 through 21 by number and title.
Item 18, Resolution Number R-12-10, a resolution of the Council of the City of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, approving and authorizing the acceptance of HUD Veterans Affairs Supportive Housing Vouchers Award issued by the Department of Housing and Urban Development, not to exceed $1.5 million, and authorizing the city manager to execute all necessary documents related to this program, including the acceptance of additional vouchers if needed. Item 19, Resolution Number R-23-11, a resolution of the Council of the City of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, authorizing and directing the entering into of an intergovernmental agreement with the City of Litchfield Park as one of the West Valley Regional Veterans Courts, Court participating municipalities. Item 20, Resolution Number R-23-12, a resolution of the Council of the City of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, authorizing and directing the entering into of an intergovernmental agreement with the Town of Wickenburg as one of the West Valley Regional Veterans Court participating municipalities. Item 21, Resolution Number R-23-13, a resolution of the Council of the City of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, authorizing and directing the entering into of Amendment Number One to the Intergovernmental Agreement for Waste Collection and Transportation Mutual Aid, Number C-19-0356, with multiple cities and towns. That concludes the consent resolutions.
Thank you. Do we have any speaker cards for any of the consent resolutions?
No, sir.
Very good. Is there a motion to approve items 18 through 21 on the consent resolutions agenda?
Yes, Mayor, I move we approve consent resolutions 18 through 21.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion from Councilmember Hugh, a second from the Vice Mayor to approve items 18 through 21 on consent resolutions agenda. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Appreciate it. Do you have it? That motion also carries. I would like to take a moment to thank Litchfield Park, the Town of Wickenburg, for stepping up to participate in the West Valley Regional Veterans Court, which were the items 19 and 20 that we just approved. The regional court will help veterans and save taxpayers' dollars. It's a good move for everyone involved. More importantly, it's a great opportunity for our veterans to start getting their lives back together. And a huge, huge thank you to our presiding judge for his continuing efforts in this initiative. Thank you, Judge. I know you're, there you are, right there. Thank you so much. Okay, moving on to bids and contracts. Ms. Bauer, can you introduce item 22 for us, please?
Authorization to enter into a construction agreement with Hydra Contracting LLC for waterline valve and fire hydrant removal and replacement throughout the city. There are no speaker cards.
Any questions from the council? Hearing none. Can I get a motion to approve item 22?
Mayor?
Go ahead.
I move we approve item 22.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion from Councilmember Melner, a second from the Vice Mayor to approve the recommended action. Is there any discussion on this motion? Hearing none. Councilmember Eldama, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Hugh, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Melner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomachoff, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Vice Mayor, how do you vote?
Mayor, I explained my vote previously, but I will just say it's another one of those dreaded five-year contracts, and with that, I vote nay.
Vice Mayor votes nay. Chair votes aye, the motion does carry. Ms. Bauer, would you introduce item 23 for us?
Authorization to award RFP 23-10 and enter into an agreement with Brown &amp; White Inc. for the installation, repair, and maintenance of guardrails, cable rail, attenuators, signs, and markings. There are no speaker cards.
No speaker cards. Councilmembers, any questions? Hearing none. Can I get a motion to approve item 23?
Mayor, I move we approve, we award RFP 23-10 and authorize the city manager to enter into the described agreement with Brown &amp; White Inc.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion from Councilmember Turner, a second from Councilmember Tomachoff to approve the recommended action. Any discussion on this motion? Hearing none. Roll call vote. Councilmember Eldama, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Hugh, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Melner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomachoff, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Clerk?
Nay.
Votes no. Chair votes aye, the motion does carry. Ms. Bauer, would you introduce item 24 for us?
Authorization to award RFP 23-10 and enter into an agreement with Falcon Contracting Inc. for the installation, repair, and maintenance of guardrails, cable rail, attenuators, signs, and markings. There are no speaker cards.
Okay, questions from the council? Hearing none. Can I get a motion to approve item 24, please?
Mayor, I move we approve item 24 with Falcon Contracting. I can't even say it. Go ahead. Just lost my voice.
Second.
Contracting.
I don't know. I think you may have to say it to make a motion. You want to try it one more time?
I got it out.
I got two seconds. Second.
Okay, so you have heard the motion. I didn't know if I understood it, but I heard it to approve the recommended action item. Is there any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. Roll call vote. Councilmember Eldama, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Hugh, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Melner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomachoff, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Vice Mayor, how do you vote?
Nay.
Chair votes aye. Ms. Bauer, would you introduce item 25, please?
Authorization to enter into an agreement with Field Data Services of Arizona Incorporated for traffic counting services. There are no speaker cards.
Any questions from our council? Hearing none. Can I get a motion to approve item 25?
Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
Motion to approve item number 25.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Eldama, a second from Councilmember Tomachoff to approve the recommended action item. Is there any discussion on this motion? Hearing none. Roll call vote. Councilmember Eldama, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Hugh, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Melner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomachoff, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Vice Mayor, how do you vote?
Nay.
Chair votes aye, that motion also carries. Ms. Bauer, could you introduce item 26, please?
Authorization to award RFP 23-10 and enter into an agreement with Pavement Marking LLC for the installation, repair, and maintenance of guardrails, cable rail, attenuators, signs, and markings. There are no speaker cards.
Okay, any questions from the council? Hearing none. I got one. What's an attenuator? Who knows that answer? Yeah, come on up. I have no idea what that is.
Mayor and council, attenuator is the, a device which is installed at the ends of the guardrail, so if the vehicle hits, doesn't hit the guardrail, so it protects the vehicle from hitting the guardrail and piercing through the, through the vehicle, you know? So it's a safety device which is installed on both ends, approach and departure of the guardrail.
Can save lives?
Yes.
Very good. I'm good. I'm good. Thank you. Okay, no other questions? Can I get a motion to approve item 26?
Yes, Mayor, I move we award RFP 23-10 to Pavement Marking LLC.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Tomachoff, a second from Councilmember Hugh to approve the recommended action. Is there any discussion on this motion? Hearing none. Roll call vote. Councilmember Eldama, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Hugh, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Melner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomachoff, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Vice Mayor, how do you vote?
Nay.
Chair votes for the attenuator. Motion carries. Ms. Bauer, can you introduce item 27, please?
Authorization to enter into an agreement with Accessories Squared Southwest Inc. for the installation and repair of guardrails, signs, and markings. There are no speaker cards.
Any questions from our council? Hearing none. Can I get a motion to approve item 27?
Mayor?
Go ahead.
I move that we approve item 27.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Melner, I have a second from the Vice Mayor to approve recommended action. Any discussion on this motion? Hearing none. Roll call vote again. Councilmember Eldama, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Hugh, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Melner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomachoff, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Vice Mayor?
Nay.
Vice Mayor votes nay. Chair votes aye, motion carries. Ms. Bauer, can you introduce item 28 for us, please?
Award of IFB 23-11 and Authorization to enter into an agreement with BTE Body Company Inc. for front load and roll-off bin parts. There are no speaker cards.
Any questions from our council on this? Hearing none. Can I get a motion to approve item 28?
Mayor, I move we award IFB 23-11 and authorize the city manager to enter into the described agreement with BTE Body Company Inc.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Turner, a second from the Vice Mayor to approve the recommended action. Is there any discussion on this motion? Hearing none. Councilmember Eldama, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Hugh, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Melner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomachoff, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Vice Mayor, how do you vote?
Nay.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Ms. Bauer, item 29, if you would?
Authorization to enter into a linking agreement with Titan Power Inc. for preventative maintenance and repair services to uninterruptible power supply units. There are no speaker cards.
Any questions from our council? Hearing none. Motion to approve. Anyone?
Yes, Mayor, I'll try again. I move we approve item 29 with Titan Power.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Hugh, a second from Councilmember Tomachoff to approve the recommended action. We have any discussion on this motion? Hearing none. Roll call vote. Start off with Councilmember Eldama, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Hugh?
Aye.
Councilmember Melner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomachoff, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner?
Aye.
Vice Mayor, how do you vote?
Nay.
Chair votes aye, that motion also carries. Okay, let's slow the vote a little bit here. We'll now move on to land development actions. Ms. Bauer, can you introduce item 30, ordinance 023-02?
Ordinance number O-23-02, an ordinance to the Council of the City of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, rezoning 1.05 acres located at 4850 West Glendale Avenue from GCO, Glendale Center Line Overlay to C3 Heavy Commercial, amending the zoning map, providing for an effective date, and ordering that a certified copy of the ordinance is recorded.
Mayor, members of the council here to provide staff report is Tabitha Perry, Planning Manager.
Very good. Public hearing is now open on item number 30, ordinance 023-02. Ms. Perry.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Phelps. Good evening, Mayor and council. At the request of the applicant, staff is asking to continue this item to the February 28th public hearing meeting.
Okay, so we just needed to have the public hearing started, and then we're going to table this? Is that what you're asking for?
Mayor, council, I'm asking for us to continue it to date specific being February 28th.
Okay, so we have a request to continue.
Mayor, I just wanted a point of order. Can we continue twice? We continued this last time.
Mayor and council, there's no restriction on continuing the, the reason why. The reason why we're asking for a specific continuance is so that we don't have to renotice it.
Mayor, I move that we continue item 30 until, what was the date?
Mayor, council, February 28th.
February 28th.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion from Councilmember Melner, a second from Councilmember Vice Mayor. Any discussion on the continuance? Go ahead.
Yeah, Mayor, are we allowed to ask if it's being continued? Any questions about the specific issue? Mr. Bailey?
Mayor and council, the motion pending on the floor is a motion to continue. Your comments and debate would be directed at whether or not you would want to-
Continue.
-continue it not on, and not as to the merits of the item.
Okay. Can we ask what the intention is of the continuance, or not?
No, it would be inappropriate this time. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Okay, so you've heard, you've heard the motion. We've had a motion and a second. Again, tell me who made the motion. I didn't write it down. Mr. Melner made the motion, and who made the second?
Vice Mayor.
Vice Mayor.
Vice Mayor, okay.
Said we'd be all right.
Okay, Vice Mayor made the second to approve the recommended action. Is there any discussion on this motion? Now's the time to answer that question. Any discussion? No? Okay, roll call vote. Councilmember Eldama, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Hugh, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Melner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomachoff, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Vice Mayor, how do you vote?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries unanimous. Okay, so I need to back up, Mr. Michael. I opened up a public hearing.
And we didn't close it.
Mayor and council, there's no, Mayor, there's no need to close it. You've already continued the item.
Okay, very good. Okay, moving on to ordinances. Ms. Bauer, would you introduce item 31, ordinance 023-04?
Ordinance number O-23-04, an ordinance of the Mayor and Council of the City of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, amending Chapter 26 of Glendale City Code as it relates to soliciting.
Mayor, members of the council here to provide staff report on item number 31 is Deputy City Manager Rick St. John.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and council. This is a request for council to adopt an ordinance amending Chapter 26 of our city code, specifically Section 2674, dealing with prohibited solicitation. This is not changing any of the language adopted by council on October of 2022, but rather is adding a definition section to that section of the code so that it's more understood in the community what we're trying to accomplish. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions from the council? Hearing none. Is there a motion for item 31, ordinance 023-04?
Yes, Mayor, I move we adopt ordinance number O-23-04.
Second.
Motion from Councilmember Tomachoff, a second from Councilmember Hugh to approve the recommended action. Is there any discussion on this motion? We have no speaker cards?
No speaker cards.
Roll call vote. Councilmember Eldama, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Hugh, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Melner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomachoff, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Vice Mayor, how do you vote?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, that motion carries unanimous. Moving on to new business, item 32, authorization. No, that's, I'm not going to take your job. You do your job.
Authorization to enter into a construction manager at risk agreement, Construction GMP1, with Oakland Construction Company Inc. for the downtown campus reinvestment project.
Mayor, members of the council here to provide staff report on this item is Eddie Garcia, Principal Architect.
Sure. Good evening, Mayor and council. This authorization primarily seeks approval to increase the project budget from 1.6 million to, with an additional 1.6 million, to a total of 3.2 million. The primary reasons why is several. For one, we are reinvesting in our downtown campus projects overall, and we see this as a long-term investment primarily for the beat and annex, relocating staff there for the foreseeable future, for the
the foreseeable future for the next couple of years while the renovation of City Hall is taking place. Eighteen months ago, the main reason for all this is eighteen months ago, we weren't sure exactly where we would be leading, but inflation and the location being formalized over that period of time was a big factor in terms of the cost. In addition, as we discovered, the use of the building was dormant for quite some time, almost a decade, and this in case of the B Museum. Rather than just repair the existing building systems, we felt it was much more value to replace the HVAC system, look at code upgrades including fire life safety, fire suppression system that wasn't installed before. And in that process, we discovered some hazardous materials, so we had to do some abatement as well. That said, though, we are accommodating quite a number of employees there, over ninety people from our current City Hall staff, and investing in this project and embedding them in downtown to better serve our citizens as well. So with that, the additional cost to accommodate the staff and the additional upgrades, this is primarily the reasons why the $1.6 million request is being asked. The report is pretty detailed overall with specifics and where the financial opportunities are coming from to support the project. We do want to say that we'd like to augment anything we can with our current community operations projects with savings and apply them as projects close out, apply them to this project as well. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Any questions?
Yes, Mayor.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Will you be, will you be reporting back to us the savings that are going to be offsetting this cost?
Mayor and council, we plan to provide those monthly updates already, and so as projects begin to close, yes, we can provide you how we are doing financially with each one of these project budgets.
All right, wonderful. Thank you.
Any other questions? Hearing none. We have any speaker cards?
No, sir.
All right. Can I get a motion on item 32?
Mayor?
Go ahead.
Watch the lava mic there. Motion to approve item number 32. Mo, yep, there.
Okay, I have a motion from Councilmember Eldama, second from Councilmember Tomachoff to approve the recommended action. Is there any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. Roll call vote. Councilmember Eldama, how do you vote?
Yeah, Mayor, I want to explain my vote.
You'd like to explain your vote? Go ahead.
Yes, sir, thank you. Kind of used to this kind of process, my day-to-day stuff that I do for work, and this would be the right time to invest in that building. If we ever occupy it after the project, it'll be ready to go for probably the next twenty years, maybe. So we're just reinvesting in our building, so I vote aye. Thank you.
Councilmember Hugh, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Melner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomachoff, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner, how do you vote?
Explain my vote?
Go ahead.
While I have reservations about the immediate intended use for that building, I do feel that it is a valuable asset of ours and we need to bring it up to modern conditions for its future. With that, I'll vote aye.
Vice Mayor, how do you vote?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. That motion also carries. Ms. Bauer, would you introduce our last item, 32?
Approval of ground lease with AEG Management LLC.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. As you know, the city manager's office has been working with the council for the better part of almost a year on this agreement, and we're very excited to bring it forth for your consideration this evening. What this agreement does is a number of things. First, it will sunset the existing management agreement that the city currently has for the management of the Desert Diamond Arena with ASM Global, who's been our arena manager partner since 2016. More importantly, what it does is it takes it from a management agreement to actually a tenant lease of the facility, and within the tenant lease, it extends the term to 20 years with renewal options. On top of that, they take on then all of the risk associated with the management and the upkeep of the facility. We've done a rough calculation of benefit of offsetting of cost and including their capital contribution towards the renovations. We believe that over a 20-year period, the benefit to the taxpayers to be approximately $135 million. More importantly, ASM Global has been totally vested into the entertainment district since they arrived in 2016. Not only do they now manage the Desert Diamond Arena on behalf of the city, but they are also stadium managers for State Farm Stadium. They also, the owner of ASM owns LA Live, and they get entertainment districts. And they are incredibly excited about the future, which is why they're willing to really to kind of plant their flag even deeper into the entertainment district for a long-term agreement. ASM has two really unique distinctions. One, they are the world's largest owner and managers of arenas and stadiums, as I said, in the entire world. They are a global company with global resources. Second, they are the largest content partner in terms of producing and promoting and routing live entertainment in the world. So we are partnering with a firm that is at the top of the industry and incredibly well-respected throughout the region. So again, tonight, this agreement will establish a new relationship going forward. They will be at least here for the next 20 years. There are provisions for them to acquire the building as well, and I know the council, we've had a chance to meet with you on several occasions to go over this agreement, so I don't think I need to go into more detail, but I'm certainly able to answer any questions, and if not, I know our city attorney can.
Any questions? Hearing none. Who'd like to make a motion for item 33?
Mayor?
Go ahead.
I move that we approve the ground lease with AEG Management LLC and authorize the city manager to sign the same.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Turner, a second from Councilmember Tomachoff to approve the recommended action. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. Do we have any speaker cards?
No, sir.
Okay, roll call vote. Councilmember Eldama, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Hugh, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Melner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomachoff, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner, how do you vote?
Like to explain my vote?
Go ahead.
I think this is beneficial to our residents and ultimately taxpayers in many ways. I think it's an incredible cost savings measure for us. It also shifts the risk of operation away from our taxpayers and over to AEG. And I think most importantly, it creates a fantastic opportunity for us to have even more and a greater variety of events and activities in there so that there will be at least something, if not many things, that our residents will want to attend in our arena on an annual basis. So with that, I vote aye.
Vice Mayor, how do you vote?
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to explain my vote as well. What many people may or may not know is that I was here when the original arena vote was taken. And at that time, the original city intent was that the city would pay off the arena debt, and our partner at the time would be paying all operations and maintenance costs. Well, as we all know, that failed to happen through a series of different owners and different debacles, and we ended up paying the operations and maintenance costs along with the debt. This agreement does one thing that is very important. It restores the city's original position and the city's original intent, which was to pay off the debt and to have all costs associated with the arena assumed by our partner. And with that, Mayor, I will be voting aye.
Thank you. And I just see this as a really neat opportunity. It's another flip of the page, another new opportunity for the city of Glendale. We will now be able to get, I think, more, much more, much better events than we've had in the past without the liabilities, but it also frees up opportunities for the city to do things that we haven't been able to do because of the burden that we have been bearing for all these years. I do want to say one other thing, because I don't want people to take this wrong. I think the initial idea of the original council that took the arena and decided to move it to Glendale, I think if you look at it today and you go, you know what? There was times a lot of people thought that was really dumb. I think it was a good idea when you look at how everything came together, how everything finally came together. It took a long time, but look where we're at now. We just finished the Super Bowl two days ago, again. So my hat's off to our city manager, to our attorney, to everybody that's put this deal together to make it work. And quite honestly, I think our citizens would be delighted when they start finding out how all of a sudden we have more things available for our city to help them with their everyday life. So with that, I do vote aye, which makes it unanimous. I feel like we should have flags going off or something. Okay, we're going to move on to council comments and suggestions, starting off with Councilmember Eldama.
None at this time, Mayor.
Nothing?
Nothing.
Okay. I just heard comments. Councilmember Hugh?
Yes, Mayor. I just received a text. I'd like to read it. Jim Burke is here. It goes, I'm just going to read it. "Councilmember, we are at our park tonight. Every court is full of people playing. Two courts, four, playing handball, and two courts of people playing racquetball. People walking dogs everywhere. It's a busy, nice, family park tonight." Thank you. Well, thanks to our parks and rec.
That's it. Okay, Councilmember Melner?
Ah, nothing tonight, Mayor.
Councilmember Tomachoff?
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
Councilmember Turner?
Thank you, Mayor. I would just like to recognize our management and our staff for the, what is apparently the flawless execution of our third Super Bowl here in Glendale. It's unimaginable how many pieces and parts of an operation like that have to fall into place or be pushed into place, managed into place, maneuvered into place over more than a year to make it come off as smooth and clean as our event did on Sunday. So I thank all of our employees. I know you, probably all of you were involved in one way or another and put in extra hours and extra effort, and many of you served as volunteers. We had volunteers in the community as well. I'm really proud of us. Thank you.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor, yes. And I'm probably going to do some repeating of what's been said already, but I know that the city manager and you as well talked about the efforts of staff toward the Super Bowl after workshop or during workshop, and I would like to also say some things, but say them in a different way. We all thank the visible players, public safety, transportation, sanitation. Can you imagine their job on Monday? I wouldn't be a sanitation worker on Monday in the city of Glendale if you paid me five times what they get.
Don't make that offer.
But the point is, those are the visible players, the players that we see and we automatically recognize. But we don't often mention the invisible players on staff. Think about this. Think about, for example, recreation and special events that had to deal with a lot of the permitting for events that happened in and around the Super Bowl. Think of budget and finance with licenses as well as managing whatever the budget was for the Super Bowl and keeping track of expenses. Think of the Office of Economic Development and their efforts to outreach CEOs who came to the Valley to try to encourage them to locate in Glendale and to sell the benefits of Glendale. Think of public affairs that must have fielded a couple of hundred media requests for interviews, either with the city manager, our police chief, our transportation director, our city mayor, you name it. All kinds of staff participated in interviews, and the list goes on and on and on. These are the invisible players, the people that we never think about, we never talk about, and usually we never thank. So on behalf of the city council and the people who attended the Super Bowl, thank you, not just to the visible players within the city, but all those invisible staff people who worked so very hard to make the Super Bowl one of the best that the NFL has ever had. Thank you.
Okay, and then I had Super Bowl, Mark, but I'm not going to mention that because I think that we've played that game enough. Okay, that's right. But I do want to remind people that we have something really cool coming up shortly, a Meacham Auto Auction, March 28th through April 1st. I don't know if folks realize that this will be the fifth year for them, already the fifth year for Meacham.